This regular meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, January 21st, 2025, in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. Present at this meeting are School Board members, Superintendent Kent McHell, a non-voting ex officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Anne Kramer. Ms. Kramer, would you please call the roll?
Director Barlow?
Here.
Chair Ursus?
Here.
Director McLaughlin?
Here.
Clerk Martin?
Here.
Chair Nathan?
Here.
Vice Chair Workman?
Here.
Board Member Gray?
Director Lighorn?
Here. At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 2.1 is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at rochesterschools.org/assembly. Item 3 is comments to the Board. It is important for the School Board to hear from our stakeholders regarding issues that impact our students, staff, families, and schools. We welcome communication via email, phone call, at our community engagement listening sessions, and here during comments to the Board. The purpose of comments to the Board is to give community members an opportunity to provide input directly to the School Board about issues that fall within our authority. The Board and Superintendent do not respond directly to the speaker's comments during the meeting, but may follow up with the speaker if requested and appropriate. Persons who want to make comments to the Board must fill out the online form by 5:00 PM on the Monday before the School Board meeting. This form is available on the RPS website and on the Assembly main page. A reminder that Policy 206 and Procedure 206A set the time, place, and manner of procedures and restrictions on comments to the Board. By participating in the public comment period, each speaker agrees to abide by this public comment procedure. Speakers, when your name is called, please come to this table. If you have written materials for the Board, please provide them to the Assistant School Board Clerk prior to your remarks, and she will distribute them to Board members. Choose a microphone to speak into and be seated. Please direct your remarks to the Board. You will have three minutes to speak, and the timer will be displayed right in front of me. Please begin your remarks by stating your name. Our first speaker tonight is Jennifer Benson.
Thank you very much, and I believe we have a good friend coming from Ron Meniker, one of the directors of our Rochester Public Schools Foundation, here to share some information. I am hoping that the tech is going to work so you can see everything and don't need to move back, and the clicker should be all teed up. And it's exciting to hear the awards that the Foundation has made to support the great work that's going on in our classrooms. So, thank you, Ron.
Well, it's a real honor for me to be here. As many of you know, I've been to many of these Board meetings, but I've never spoken. So, now is my first chance. So, as I'm working through these slides here, I'm a new director, so I'm representing my colleagues who are unavailable to be here today. As you know, the Rochester Public School Foundation is a nonprofit foundation that connects the community and our schools to advance and inspire educational opportunities for students. And we're very happy to say, since 1988, we've awarded over $650,000, and that is a significant dollar amount. And the funds come from a variety of sources: personal, business donations, school district payroll, sometimes it's honoring a staff member, other Rochester Public School Foundation fundraisers, we're working on some of those right now, and established memorial funds and special projects. These are some of those funds. I'm not going to spend the time to go through all of them, but it's inspiring to know that funds have been established for memorials, for teachers, for students, for people that have been involved with the various schools, and they go back since the beginning of the Foundation, since 1988, 1989. And again, you can see some of the reasons and rationale for some of these funds, and who they're honoring, and also the opportunities they present in photography and other unique circumstances. And as I'm getting my arms around the Rochester Public Schools Foundation, I'm seeing potential opportunities to, along with my colleagues as directors, to say, how can we expand this to leverage the funds that are available from the Rochester Public Schools District? And again, you can see some of the opportunities and the opportunities to establish more funds. This year, we awarded $10,351 to fund five innovative projects. Now, this is where I'm going to have to be particularly creative, because I don't know who is here representing. So, if there's someone from the Toons for Transition Programs, Kristi, could you join me? All right, Kristi is coming. I have notes, just in case, but I'm going to let the person spend 60 to 90 seconds to explain, and I'm meeting Kristi for the first time.
My name is Kristi Downs. I teach at the Reel Program in the Freidel Building. My Toons and Transition Grant is allowing for a music therapist from Healing Rhythms to do classes for 40 of our students. Because of the large size, it's set into three groups, and they have it set up in February, so they'll have four consecutive weeks of music therapy classes. And we're looking forward to the benefit of learning how to use music to control our emotions. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's awesome. The second program, I know the individuals here because I met Kristi, and so Kristi's going to join me to talk about the exciting Launching into Literacy: Engaging Students Through Book Clubs initiative.
I am a third grade teacher at Gibbs Elementary, and our purpose of our project was to further engage students in reading. This year, we have begun implementing Witch and Wisdom. This is a wonderful whole group curriculum that builds students' knowledge. We are adding a small group component to the curriculum by implementing student-led book clubs. In our book clubs, students aren't just passive readers; they take charge of their learning. Through engaging discussions, they have the opportunity to express their thoughts, challenge each other's ideas, and deepen their understandings of text. This is a collaborative approach, not only enhances their comprehension, but also builds their confidence and camaraderie between peers. We've used the grant money to purchase books that complement the topic, Module 2: Outer Space, and Module 3: A New Home. Our goal is to give students the opportunity to grow their own reading ability by digesting a high volume of books surrounding these topics. Additionally, we are committed to adding a diverse catalog of books that include many culturally diverse characters to allow our students to see themselves in the books they read. By providing a variety of books that highlight different perspectives and experiences, the students can connect more deeply with the material and see themselves in the stories that they read.
Thank you.
Congrats.
We are going to applaud, but I'm saving Ron's time, so.
Okay. Another project is the Green Bandana Project, and I don't know if anyone is here from the group, and we do. Why? Everyone came. It's awesome.
Good evening. The Green Bandana Project is a program for students that raises mental health awareness, reduces stigma, and connects students to mental health and suicide prevention resources. Through this program, students at the Rochester Alternative Learning Center will have the opportunity to attend a short training course where they will learn the skills and resources needed to connect peers with mental health supports. Green is the color of mental health awareness. Students who opt into the training will carry resource cards and tie a green bandana to their backpack or another visible location as a way to let their peers know that they are a member of the Green Bandana Project and a trusted person who knows how and where to reach out for help. The Green Bandana Project was created by Dr. Betsy Kerbek at the University of Wisconsin River Falls in 2014 after losing her son Daniel to suicide. We are thankful for the opportunity to bring this program to the ALC and thank the Rochester Public School Foundation for their generosity and support. Our chapter of the Green Bandana Project will be headed by Mayo Clinic Student Health Services Staff Megan Johnson, RN, Karen Townsend, PAC, and by Student Services Program Coordinator Alina Bachmann. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fourth project is the Future Upward Climbers. And I should have known this, because I met Shannon before. So, Shannon's going to join us about this exciting project, the fourth of five.
Thank you. We're very honored to have this grant opportunity. We are going to build a climbing wall for kids at Hoover ELS, our early learning school, and to really work on self-confidence, different learning through different ways to climb on the wall, and we're really excited for this opportunity. Thank you.
And this is for three- to five-year-olds, right?
Yeah, three- to five-year-olds.
Great. And the fifth project is Jasmine or someone from the team here?
I'm not Jasmine.
Tim Lindberg, Principal at the ALC. Jasmine asked to just come and explain the project. Basically, at the ALC, our students have a lot going on, and that's why they come here. And during the day, oftentimes, they find themselves out of sorts. They just need to be re-regulated. Sometimes, that can happen through a conversation; sometimes, it just happens through just taking away and getting in their own space. And so, many members of the ALC community wrote this grant to just create a multisensory room where students could go and use some of the tools and some of the different things that are out there in the market to just get themselves back regulated so that they could go and do school. So, we're thankful for the Public Schools Foundation for funding this project, and on behalf of the ALC, we look forward to how this can support our students in keeping them in school and keep the learning process moving forward. So, thank you.
Very exciting. I was asked to also remind everyone that we can honor an RPS staff member by accepting donations in the following names, and that since the last time we were here, that the following staff were honored, and you can see the names up there. There is a next grant cycle that's already being worked on. We do this twice a year, and we're always seeking individuals to report on these projects, because it's not the Board that is doing the review. There's a highly refined, transparent, criteria-evidence-based process that we're using to make certain that those that should be awarded are awarded, and we're always looking for people that are interested, not necessarily being on the Board, but maybe involving working on the review of a project. So, now I'll turn it over for questions.
Well, I think the first thing we should do is thank you for getting your presentation within the time period, and let's give a round of applause to all the grant recipients. Board members, any questions or comments? Well, Director McLaughlin?
I just noticed, just by accident, a lot of these are at the ALC, and I appreciate that, that I think that that's a good thing that we can do to support the students that attend there.
Director Mc?
Well, since being on the Board and even in the past, my involvement with the Public Schools Foundation, I just find that so many of the bright spots, the peaks in our district, can be traced back to the innovation of our educators and the kind of seed funding that comes from this organization. So, thank you for lifting these projects off the ground, getting them started. Thank you for the creativity of the educators that are taking this opportunity to bring their ideas to life and light a spark under our students or in front of our students or something, but it's exciting. Thank you, and thanks for sharing it.
And it would be remiss if I did not highlight, the website is www.rpsf.org, and these programs cannot be funded without the generosity of donations from the community. And as you saw with the list of various funds, there's different ways to contribute to different kinds of projects or different kinds of funding. So, it's a great organization. We're glad to see that your work continues, and we look forward to your next presentation. Thank you.
We'll get a picture for everyone.
Yes.
Okay.
Our next agenda, my item is 4.3, Board Member Updates. Does any Board Member have updates from committees or any other events that they would like to share, including any observations from attendance at the MSBA Leadership Conference last week? Director Mervin?
Two things. I don't think we've talked about our skip visit to Sunset Terrace since we visited there a few weeks ago. Amazing school. I think that all of us who are able to attend these visits at the school really believe that this is the way to find out what we need to know about what's going on and to see the kind of innovative, creative teaching and administration at these buildings, to see it firsthand. At Sunset Terrace especially, they talked about how successful their family engagement has been, and they talked about the huge number of people who come to the events that they have. Always, there's information that can be provided, but the focus has been to share a meal and to just get to know each other, so that families feel comfortable coming into the building, that they know the teachers, they know the staff. Kids come and have fun. Sometimes, it's just game nights, but that was wonderful. And then, the conference later?
Okay. Any other non-conference conversations? All right, you started us. Director Mervin, go ahead.
Okay. Well, two things about the Minnesota School Boards Association State Conference, Minnesota. I guess it would be the state. They have amazing speakers speaking to hundreds and hundreds. How many people were there?
1,400.
1,400, so that's hundreds and hundreds of people. And the first person in particular found a way to combine his love of music with his love for teaching, and he really focused on how important teachers are and how important it is for us to appreciate the importance of teachers as they connect with students. That until students know that their teachers believe in them, at least one teacher really believes in them and sees them for who they are, it's more difficult for that kid to become a success. Then there were a number of breakout sessions. I went to one on artificial intelligence, just because it terrifies me, and they did a Wordle thing, whatever, at the beginning, where you're supposed to put words, and when you think of artificial intelligence, what comes to mind? And the two biggest reactions were scary and exciting. They talked about how artificial intelligence can be a huge boon to classroom teachers as they differentiate lessons for kids who have special needs, for second language learners, the potential that's there, and also the importance of school districts, making sure that safeguards are in place. But one thing that I remember in particular was that they said, "This can be a terrifying transition for a lot of people." But they said, "But so was the Gutenberg printing press about 600 years ago. So were the use of calculators in classrooms about 30 years ago, and we have weathered those, so I think we should all believe that we're going to be fine." I hope.
Director McLaughlin?
I happened to attend the same breakout session on the AI, and it was so well-attended that we didn't know we were both there. So, that was good. One of the reasons I picked that one, though, is that last year at the Leadership Conference, the AI was kind of a key topic at our large group sessions, and I was curious to know how that was going to carry over into workshops and other opportunities at this leadership session. And the things that I took away, a couple of the slides talked about starting a conversation in the district, about what role that AI can play in our learning environment, and what are the guidelines for AI in our organization, and how do our current practices and policies align to our vision and guidelines with AI? It was also interesting to learn that one of the main concepts of this workshop was creating a culture of learning and innovation. And then, the other thing I wanted to pass on to others in the district is that this particular workshop was put on by a group of people. The presenters were from St. Cloud School District and the Department of Education, but they meet regularly in a group called Mingaya. I thought that was a really strange word, but that's what they call themselves. And if anyone's interested in joining that group, they invited us to join. So, I don't know if people in the district, whether teachers or staff or administrators are interested in that, reach out to me. that we're using to make certain that those that should be awarded are awarded. And we're always looking for people that are interested, not necessarily being on the board, but maybe involving, working on the, the review of a project. So now I'll turn it over for questions.
Well, I think the first thing we should do is thank you for getting into your, and getting your presentation within the time period. And let's give a round of applause to all the grant recipients. Board members, any questions or comments? Well, Director McLaughlin.
I just noticed, just by accident, a lot of these are at the ALC. And I appreciate that, that I think that that's a good thing that we can do to support the students that attend there.
Director McLaughlin.
Well, since being on the board and even in the, the past, my involvement with the, the Public Schools Foundation, I just find that so many of the, the bright spots, the peaks in our district can be traced back to the innovation of our educators and the kind of seed funding that comes from, from this organization. So thank you for lifting these projects off the ground, getting them started. Thank you for the creativity of the educators that are taking this opportunity to bring their ideas to life and light a spark under our students and, or in front of our students or something. But it's exciting. Thank you. And thanks for sharing it.
And it would be remiss if I did not highlight, the website is www.rpsf.org. And these programs cannot be funded without the generosity of donations from the community. And as you saw with the list of various funds, there's different ways to contribute to different kinds of projects or different kinds of, of funding. So it's a great organization. We're glad to see that your work continues. And we look forward to your next presentation. Thank you.
We'll get a picture for everyone.
Yes.
Okay.
Our next agenda, my item is 4.3, Board Member Committee, Board Member Updates. Does any board member have updates from committees or any other events that they would like to share, including any observations from attendance at the MSBA Leadership Conference last week? Director Marvin.
Two things. I don't think we've talked about our skip visit to Sunset Terrace since we visited there a few weeks ago. Amazing school. I am, I think that all of us who are able to attend these visits at the school really believe that this is the way to find out what we need to know about what's going on and to see the kind of innovative, creative teaching and administration at these buildings, to see it firsthand. At Sunset Terrace especially, they talked about how successful their family engagement has been. And they talked about the huge number of people who come to the events that they have. Always, there's information that can be provided, but the focus has been to share a meal and to just get to know each other so that families feel comfortable coming into the building, that they know the teachers, they know the staff, kids come and have fun. Sometimes it's just game nights, but that was wonderful. And then the conference later.
Okay. Any other non-conference conversations? All right. You started us. Director Marvin, go ahead.
Okay. Well, two things about the Minnesota School Boards Association State Conference, Minnesota. I guess it would be the state. They have amazing speakers speaking to hundreds and hundreds. How many people were there?
Fourteen hundred.
Fourteen hundred. So that's hundreds and hundreds of people. And the first person in particular found a way to combine his love of music with his love for teaching. And he really focused on how important teachers are and how important it is for us to appreciate the importance of teachers as they connect with students. That until students know that their teachers believe in them, at least one teacher really believes in them and sees them for who they are, it's more difficult for that kid to become a success. Then there were a number of breakout sessions. I went to one on artificial intelligence just because it terrifies me. And they did a Wordle thing, whatever, at the beginning, where you're supposed to put words and when you think of artificial intelligence, what comes to mind? And the two biggest reactions were scary and exciting. They talked about how artificial intelligence can be a huge boon to classroom teachers as they differentiate lessons for kids who have special needs, for second language learners, the potential that's there, and also the importance of school districts, making sure that safeguards are in place. But one thing that I remember in particular was that they said, this can be a terrifying transition for a lot of people. But they said, but so was the Gutenberg printing press about 600 years ago. So were the use of calculators in classrooms about 30 years ago. And we have weathered those. So I think we should all believe that we're going to be fine. I hope.
Director McLaughlin.
I happened to attend the same breakout session on the AI. And it was so well-attended that we didn't know we were both there. So that was good. One of the reasons I picked that one, though, is that last year at the Leadership Conference, the AI was a kind of a key topic at our large group sessions. And I was curious to know how that was going to carry over into workshops and other opportunities at this leadership session. And the things that I took away, a couple of the slides talked about starting a conversation in the district, about what role that AI can play in our learning environment, and what are the guidelines for AI in our organization? And how do our current practices and policies align to our vision and guidelines with AI? It was also interesting to learn that one of the main concepts of this workshop was creating a culture of learning and innovation. And then the other thing I wanted to pass on to others in the district is that this particular workshop was put on by a group of people. The presenters were from St. Cloud School District and the Department of Education. But they meet regularly in a group called Mingaya. I thought that was a really strange word, but that's how they, that's what they call themselves. And if anyone's interested in joining that group, they invited us to join. So I don't know if people in the district, whether teachers or staff or administrators are interested in that, reach out to me and I can get you their contact information. And if I could just take the liberty to talk about one other session as well. I also did one of the pre-conference sessions, and it was also about AI. So it was kind of a theme for me this year. And that was taught by someone from the Missouri School Board Association. Things I learned there is that ChatGPT, it took five days to have 1 million users of ChatGPT. And that shows how, the exciting part, people were very excited about it. It was the fastest that an app had been used that quickly. They showed a graphic of other apps took periods of time. And ChatGPT was the fastest to get to 1 million. They also talked about the seven things that districts can do to address AI in our districts, including policies, following confidentiality laws, delegating authority, making sure that teachers understand their, their jobs are safe, educating stakeholders, vetting the AI tools, and reviewing the vendors that the district may use. And I think, I just got the slides from that presenter this morning, and I'll share those with the board as well. But it kind of grounded me in thinking about our future because I think the message I took away from both sessions is that AR, AI is here. It's here to stay. We need to figure out how to implement it into our district.
Director Workman.
I'll touch briefly on, on three components of the conference, starting with the opening session, which was, as those of us who were there know. The presenter was a saxophone player, and he actually intermingled in the audience. What really impressed me was that he had a kind of a call-in response that we sort of sang back to him, and it kept modulating. And the audience, for the most part, really stuck with him, which shows to me that at some point, the people in the room had some kind of training in music education. So I would like to tie that together with the grant recipient for the music therapy classes at the ALC and how important music and the arts are to our lives, which he also emphasized. The second thing was I attended a, a very interesting session, part of which talked about the, our First Amendment rights and how sometimes those rights overlap or clash with, with each other and how to navigate that. And I found it to be very interesting. I learned a lot of things that I hadn't learned or hadn't known before, which was always good to know, learn new things. And then finally, every other week, the Minnesota School Board Association has a, a Coffee and Conversation virtual meeting online. We have to provide the coffee. They don't do that for us. And so it was really great to meet in person so many of the faces that I've been interacting with over the past number of years. And once again, talking to other school board members from other districts, really impressed on me the fact that I think we are doing a lot of really, really good things and really right things in Rochester. And I'm anticipating that we will continue to be leaders in many of these areas. Director Whitehorn.
She's going to call my name, even if I hand went up still. Okay, so this was my first conference. So it was a lot of, a lot of information. There's a lot of information. I will say, just to mirror exactly what Director Workman said, I'm, I'm always very excited about music as well. So it was really invigorating to see how actually both the opening presenter and the closing presenter both used music in their presentations to really grasp people's attention and how it really sticks. And I was also going to say that I'm also excited about the music therapy. And I hope that is something that really takes off and that they can begin to see the value in. As in the presentations, we could see how music was such a common language for so many people. It transcends races, generations. It transcends so many things. And it is usually an expression of emotion. And regardless if you can sing, hold a note or not, most people try to dance or sing or, or something. So I just thought of how powerful that was, and that really stuck with me as well. I'm a big on quotes, so I have been, I can't think of the author's name, but there's a book that's called Know Your Why, or What Is Your Why? I was interested in the opening presentation, I believe, he said, "To Be Who." So who are you? So more so of just what your why is. What I really did take from the conference is that it can take one person to make a significant change in a lot of places. But someone has to stand out front. Some of the quotes that I took over the day was, "My strength is not in me, but in we." "Not everything counts, but everything matters." And then, "Have you been seen or do you see others?" Another consistent thing that I noticed throughout the conference was the value in for everybody in being seen or that people recognizing that you are in a space. And I guess what I really took from a lot of the information, because there was a myriad of information. I attended some conferences about collaborating learning as, as far as our community education and how do we better collaborate with them, with the district? And how do we get the community more, more involved in our community learning? Also attended a session that was around collaborating with the students and the business owners and the educators as we try to solve some of the issues that we have within our school district and the value of people coming together. Because I was new, I, I, unlike Director McLaughlin here, I did, I, I, I went all different places. I didn't, I didn't stay with a theme. So I attended everything from learning how you can get your student loans paid off to, to learning about how the Minnesota Department of Agriculture could be an assistant to our students. And I did that because there are so many different areas that our students can use support in. Every student is not going to school to become a doctor. And every student is not going to school to become a farmer. But we need to make sure that we are providing supports for all of our students. And that could be done in a myriad of ways. So I took in a lot of information. I, I didn't bring my notes because it would be very embarrassing. There were a lot of pages of things everywhere. But my final takeaway from this weekend was the importance of love. And that I like how the presenter put it, that love is an expression of care and consistency. And that is what our children need more so than anything else. I know we look at a lot of different issues, but despite of all of those things, what our children really need is for us to be united and for them to know that we all care. Not for us all to always agree on everything, but for the people that are involved to really have these children's best interests in mind and for us as adults to see them and be present in their lives as, as today. So that's what I took away.
So I went to a session that made me very excited about what we have on our schedule this year for the work that we're doing with developing a new strategic plan, with our profile of a graduate, with our, our mission, our vision and our values. Austin Public Schools has gone through this process of developing a new strategic plan and what they call the Packer Profile, which are the community's shared aspirations for students and what it means to be a graduate of Austin Public Schools. And then they've also developed curriculum and coursework for the students to bring to life these core values. They have a scope and sequence of courses starting in ninth grade. So they've added a required course in ninth grade that runs the whole year that covers essentially what they feel students need to be prepared and ready to be successful in high school and beyond. And then in 10th and 11th and 12th grade, they meet four times a year in a seminar format to continue to build on the Packer Profile. And part of, one of the tools that they, that the students develop through this process is what they call the Packer Portfolio. So they're creating an opportunity for students, and I think that opportunity is available in Zello, for students to collect examples of their work and examples of what they have accomplished through their educational career to use either in preparing for applications or, or job applications or demonstrating what they've learned past, to be used past high school. So it was really exciting just to see us, from a strategic plan process to a mission, vision and values process, to actual coursework being developed. And what they're showing with the data is this ninth grade work, which the superintendent has also talked about before, focusing on ninth grade success is reducing the amount of failure rate of ninth grade courses. And they're hoping that once these ninth graders move through the four years, it will increase their graduation rates. So it was exciting to see them so excited about implementing this program and what it might mean for us here. The other item wasn't a workshop, but it's an initiative that I hope we'll be able to share with you through the year. The Minnesota School Board Association and a number of other educational organizations in the state of Minnesota are beginning a campaign called One Voice, Be a Unifying Voice for Public Education, where they're pulling together a coalition of individuals to just emphasize the importance of public education, the kind of support public education needs, both financially in terms of policy and law. And they're looking for voices who are willing to speak out and stand up for, for our public schools. So you'll be hearing more of that through the year, but that kicked off at the conference as well. Superintendent, anything?
This is going to seem really... I, I can't think of a, a totally perfect term. I was struck by what a good school board we have. No, I'm, I'm serious. We have got, I think this every day, but it's when I get there with 1,400 other board members that we have got a board that is really serious about kids and fun to hang out with. But that's, that's not always the case. I have to be honest. There are some times I sat in the back of those conference rooms and people are checking their phones and leaving early. And that's just the lowest level of it. But more than that, these board members were like, for those of you who get the reference, they were like Pac-Man eating up, they were going to constantly, they were coming back, comparing. And it was, I was struck. And that, that was just one expression of how I see that. I see it every board meeting with the degree to, the degree to which we have a board that preps and reads for these meetings. So that was, I think, something that was reassuring to me in the opportunity to work for a board that takes this work as seriously as you do.
And I will share a secret about our new, our newest board member. When she said, "There's some people who can't or can carry a tune." She can carry a tune, and she knew the lyrics for every song on the mixtape that that speaker brought up at the closing session. So... Maybe we'll need to integrate music into our board, board meeting members. Yeah, Stephanie's about it. Our next agenda item is our Consent Agenda, 5.1 through 5.11. Would any board member like any item removed from the Consent Agenda for separate consideration?
With approval.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve the Consent Agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A Consent Agenda has been approved. Our next item is a focus topic, Student and Staff Survey Data Review Update. Superintendent Pecow.
Thank you, Joe Nathan. And you can see our Director of Research and Improvement, Dr. Peter Ruck, is coming up. He'll be giving this presentation. In meeting with the Chair and Vice Chair this week, I recognized that this presentation tonight is a bit of a holdover from the way our board meetings have treated data updates to date. And Monet Perkins, our Chief Academic Officer, coming up too.
He's presenting. I'm just sitting up here with him.
All right. As board members, board members will recall, in our previous model, we would give the board an update on the most recent indicators from the things in what we called the grid, the broad indicators of performance in RPS, of which there are 33, so quite an ambitious agenda. So when the MCA scores came out, we would do a briefing on the MCA scores. When the grad rates came out, we would do a briefing on the grad rates. That was not always connected to what we're doing to improve those outcomes, the initiatives. And in the new model we've adopted, in the ABCD for this year, whenever we look at an issue, we're also giving the board and other folks who are watching an update on how we are working to improve literacy scores, our grad rates, or staff satisfaction rates. This present, this presentation is a bit of a holdover from our old model. This was, the Panorama survey was given in the fall. It was something that with the referendum going on and other things going on, we didn't get on the agenda. And so in talking with Kathy and Julie at Exec, I was remembering, this is something that I was looking for an opportunity to share with the board. So what you are going to hear tonight are not the many things we're doing to address the measures that Peter and Mona are going to walk us through. But we will return to this data. When we talk at discipline data this summer, when we talk about attendance data coming up, when we also talk, as many remember, Peter shared some fascinating data looking at associations between MCA data and the degree to which kids feel they belong in their schools, based on the Panorama survey. We will be using this data in the other sessions this year where we're looking not just at what does the data say, but what are we doing to address the data? Tonight is kind of a throwback to where we were before we adopted that new model. And I still think it's, it's very useful. Our school improvement teams, as this new skip process begins in February, will be making use of this data. So it's useful for the board to get an overview of where we are. But I wanted to kind of explain that holdover from our previous approach to sharing data relative to the one that we'll be looking at in the rest of the year ahead. So with that, turn it over to Peter and Mona, and let's jump in.
Well, good evening. You have me two weeks in a row. It's a very lucky day. All right. So today, this evening, I'm with you for our 2024 Panorama results. I will take us through just some basics of the survey structure and how it works, why we do it. I will then go over some summary metrics for our results and then share a few conclusions about what the evidence may be suggesting for us and where we're headed next. All right. So an overview of Panorama. Panorama is a set of surveys that we license from a vendor. And it covers a wide variety of topics for both students and for employees. More on that on the next slide. We've conducted it since 2019. Historically, there have been years where we did it twice a year. There have also been years where we did it once a year. The surveys that we have conducted have also changed over time. And you'll see that when we get to the results slides with the trend lines. When we originally acquired Panorama, we did so because it was systematic. It helps us understand a lot about group-level dynamics, even with secondary students that are notoriously hard to reach on some of this stuff. It's confidential and administration is not terribly taxing. It really only takes 25 minutes-ish to, to do it, so not even a full class period. The reporting components span grades 3 through 12. They don't administer Panorama to K1 and 2. We do have a couple of schools that do some sort of more qualitative surveys with their younger students that mirror some of these items, but the survey itself only goes down to third grade. Covers items around belonging and social awareness, some school climate and environment items. And then also scales related to classroom experience, pedagogical effectiveness, and impressions of the reader. Panorama's results actually give us a lot of information that we can use to support any number of our strategic plans building blocks. But specifically, the four that I call out here are cases where the Panorama results have been directly useful. So that includes elevating deeper learning, enhancing belonging and behavior, getting baseline information from parents and caregivers, and uplifting student voice from a systematic level. Gives us another angle besides some of our other initiatives. When you look at the results, it's important to digest them carefully. Some of you will remember this from the last time I presented Panorama. The way the survey works in almost all cases is you have five answer choices. And the two answer choices that we would hope people would pick are the two that you add together, and that's what gives you your percent favorable. So in this case, we would hope that students would either be quite excited or very excited to go to class, and thus the two together give us 81% favorable. It can be a bit confusing, I made an example with some fake data, when it's something that we don't consider desirable. So we don't want students to worry about violence in school. But the way Panorama does this is it takes the percent of students who don't worry about violence very often and says, responded favorably. If you read the question, "How often do you worry about violence in your school?" And 60% respond favorably. Most of us read that and think, 60% of students worry. It's actually the other way around. Got to get under the hood and look at some of those question details. Other thing I'll mention on this, and it was with some of our high school colleagues that helped point this out to me a couple of years ago. There are also cases where that middle choice may be... that middle choice may be very informative as well, the sometimes choice, even though it's not necessarily included in the percent responding favorably. So these are the six items, using the older survey, that were behind that scale. The scale is just adding up how many people added favorably and calculating the average. But there are almost always specific items that drive those averages. So in my fake data example, these are the two questions that were salient in making that percent favorable the way that it was, while the other four might not matter as much. This gets to some of the points of Panorama being a broad-level screening device for us. Response rates, I always like to celebrate our highest response rates. On average, for elementary, middle, and high school, the highest for each level, Gibbs, Kellogg, and John Marshall. And John Marshall, it's their first time at the top of the pack, so special congrats to them. Staff response rates slipped a bit this year. Anecdotally, and in the brief looking I did at the data itself, that appeared to be a drop among elementary school teachers, which, given everything that's going on right now, as well as when the survey was administered right before the Thanksgiving holiday, just lower uptake there this year than there has in the past. So an area for us to improve upon. Now that we've covered basic structure, some reminders of how this works, here are our results broken down by elementary and secondary. On the screen, you'll see a trend line with dots representing each administration of the survey. And on the column on the far right, you will see remarks that I put there. The elementary school survey this year was revised, the question language changed, and that affected results nationwide, which I'll talk about a little bit later on. The reason you see, for example, we have nine observations for school safety, but only eight for school climate, is because that survey was not originally administered in 2019, so there's one fewer administration. That gets to be even more salient in some of our later slides. So here you can see that school safety increased by about four percentage points. In general, when you're looking at these slides, this is just heuristic, but anything two to three points that could easily be statistical noise, when you start to get to four and five percentage points, that's a larger movement. The vendor noticed at the elementary level that school climate, sense of belonging, and especially social awareness dropped nationwide based on their new survey language. Their average drop on those was between eight and 12 percentage points, just based on clearing up some of the question language to make it easier for especially third and fourth graders. So some of this that you're seeing in such a different trend, obviously, against where things were, is that the survey itself did change. So that's important to keep in mind where that's noted. Down through emotion regulation, and then two of our more recent surveys that we've added, pedagogical effectiveness and student impressions of rigorous expectations. School climate and belonging engagement was another one, where the vendor noted large decreases nationally, not just for us. And student-teacher relationships, same story. For the most part, if you take into account what the vendor said about the question language changing, these are relatively stable results. We'll know more when we do it again. Secondary school, going through some of the same items and the same metrics, these questions did not change as much. There was a little bit of change in the social awareness survey. If I remember correctly, they changed a question to be sure on that one. But again, you see pretty similar trends over time, since we started that in 2015. You'll notice, however, that even though the trends look broadly consistent with including our, or set against our elementary students, that the percentiles for placing our secondary schools nationally are quite a bit lower for secondary than they are for elementary. Last student results slide of relationships, belonging, and engagement at the secondary level. The survey also goes to non-instructional staff and instructional staff, and it divides the two accordingly. The most encouraging thing, I think, on this slide and the next slide is that the measure of school climate for both licensed teaching staff and non-instructional staff has been steadily, slowly increasing over multiple administrations. There's been a pretty concerted effort on that among many of our leaders, and so that gives us some interesting evidence to work with. Similar patterns for our licensed teaching staff as well. Did have some standouts as always. So percentage point increases, some places to celebrate and look at. At the elementary level, the school safety index at Franklin improved by 19 points between years. Bishop, 13 points, and Elton Hills, 10 points. Classroom climate at Longfellow, 13 points up. MinSec, which I know that Brandon and his team have done a lot of specific work on this, actually saw classroom climate improve by 26 points between surveys. And climate at Longfellow, again, another 10-point increase. At the secondary level, all of the schools increased for classroom belonging. The lowest increase was six points, and the highest was 12. For school safety, it's especially notable that these three schools, Century, Dakota, and Willow Creek, lead our pack. Nine points up, 11 points, and 12 points respectively. Again, every single school did improve. And finally, the sense of belonging, again, across the board, every school improved. The lowest increase was six points, and the highest was 12. So this gives us enough evidence to draw some conclusions. The evidence would suggest that our efforts to increase belonging and climate are paying off, especially at the secondary level for students. It also suggests that our initiatives for pedagogical effectiveness and rigor still need some attention. Generally speaking, across all of our metrics, our elementary schools compare slightly above average to their national peers, 60 to 70 of percentile, whereas our secondary schools compare much less favorably to their national peers. And the change in question language really did impact our results in certain areas, such that some of those trend data may be obfuscating. So what comes next? Two favorite quotes of mine. I think that, especially in education, we are very guilty of jumping to the solution before we fully and completely understand the facets of the problem. So what does Panorama allow us to do? It gives us a place to dig deeper. It's kind of like a screener, like Fast Food. Gives us a guide of where we need to understand metrics. Surveys are good for theory testing, but they're not good for theory formulation in general. That's when you need to go start talking to people and having conversations with your important stakeholders at your school. Some of the Panorama metrics, as Dr. Pecquell mentioned, are likely to appear in some of our planning for Skip 2.0, but one thing we would not use is student self-reports of their own competencies. It turns out that if you look at the scientific research on it, students are relatively poor at rating their own learning consistently. So we wouldn't necessarily use student self-reports of competencies, but self-reports of their own experience and impressions within the school is a bit of a difference. And with that, I'd be more than willing to answer any questions that you may have.
Director Cook.
I'm just wondering if there's any way, or if we have any information on the students, especially at the high school level, that are responding to this survey? Because both in assessing what the trends mean that are positive, and just the absolute national percentile ranking, I don't know. Do we know anything about the half of students that are filling out this survey, and whether they are skewed in one way or another?
That's a really good question. We, the Panorama platform divides up the demographics of the people who take the survey, but not the ones who don't. So that's, but the data's available to us. So that's certainly something we could look into. I have not learned that specifically. Yeah, I mean, with a 60% response rate on any survey, you're getting really high. So that's even an in-person survey. I certainly wouldn't be concerned about representativeness of it.
Or are high schools that high?
Between 50 and 60, yeah. I think the lowest response rate was Mayo at 48. They're all right, right around that.
Okay, that's helpful.
Director Marvin.
Does students take this at school, or is it sent out and they do it at home?
So it's sent out by email. The schools do shelter time for them to do it. Some students find it in their email before the school, like, time to do it, but that's very few. There's always like 20 or 30 kids that take it, like, the night the email goes out at midnight. It's actually kind of impressive in that way.
But there's class time then dedicated?
Correct. Every single school devotes class time to it.
And so if 40% of the students don't take it, they just sit?
It can depend on attendance. It can depend on, you know, if you're, if the school's doing it at a time when a lot of students are at PSEO or activities, or any of those things can drive a lot of that. Also, frankly, you know, since it's a confidential survey, nobody's watching over their shoulder on their device to make sure that's what they're doing. So they may also just choose not to complete it when they're given the opportunity.
Thanks for that, because I think that Mr. Cook's question was a good one.
Yeah, very much so.
The kids who aren't taking it, what do we not know about how they feel?
Yeah, and we, the response rates have varied at the high school level over the years. They were as high as 70 two years ago, and last year as well. We had a drop-off this year in particular. The demographics of who takes the survey broadly matches the demographics of the school, which is why there's not really reason to suspect that those who aren't taking it are systematically different. But it's certainly something worth looking into. The data's available to us, so.
Superintendent.
I think to Director Cook's question about kind of what I think of as the so what, now what question when you have data like this, and also to Dr. Marvin's, over time, we want to see shift in these data at the system level, but they really are most useful at the school level. Because kids at one school are only incredibly indirectly connected to the sense of belonging in another school. It's really in that school. And so when we look at this as an indicator of interventions that schools can be putting in place in their school improvement plans with district support, that's really where the rubber meets the road and where we need to dig into that data. To me, the single most interesting finding in this year's Panorama data was the school safety information for Century, Dakota, and Willow Creek. All three of those schools have struggled with that, and not only have we seen improvements in some of the discipline metrics, we saw improvements in kids' report of that safety. And so now digging into that and saying which kids said they still don't feel safe can point those schools toward the, where do we actually need to dig in? Is it our multilanguage learners? Is it our girls? Is it our boys? Maybe there's no way to generalize. Often, there is. And so that's where the next phase of that would come, so that, you know, if Willow Creek is going to build on their 12 percentage point improvement, or Dakota 11 percentage point, who is still self-reporting that absence of feeling safe? And that plays out across other, you know, areas as well. That was one that I thought was particularly of note. I also think, as Peter alluded to, going forward, assuming we stick with Panorama, and there's no perfect instrument, I think we can shift to choosing the areas that are most actionable for schools. Because to sort of pick measures that don't change much, because they're really reporting on how kids kind of see the world, as opposed to how I feel in my school, how the teaching is, how the safety is, is much less useful than those kinds of things that are actionable for schools. And so we'll be asking you to approve, as a board, this spring, the highest level success measures in our new school improvement process, and ultimately, the strategic plan. Some of those will be survey-based measures from kids and staff, and for all of them, we'll break them down demographically. How do staff from different racial backgrounds, genders, things, how do they report? And then, of course, the same thing for students. So I'm sort of, I think it's important to take this super-high-level 30,000-foot look, but the real value is at the building level, and then it's in breaking it down beneath even the building level. So we're like, what's happening with safety in third grade? What's happening with pedagogical effectiveness is a fancy way of saying, how engaging and powerful is the teaching in 11th grade? That's where these data are going to be, you know, most useful, I think.
Director Whitman.
So just like Director Cook took my question right off of my little sheet of paper. But what I would also like to know is how are our percentages in comparison to the national average, right? So you said this is a national survey, so is our turnout also similar to what they're seeing nationwide? Or, because when you're comparing us to a national average, I guess I'd be curious to know if we are at par with the completion of these surveys as well, or, you know, we above it with us.
Fantastic question. I actually asked the vendor that last week. So our elementaries are above average for response rates, and our middles are great, sort of, are above average, and high schools are below average for response rates. Not massively, but a little bit.
I'm sorry, and to add to that question, does that, do you think that has any correlation? Because you did mention that you think that the turnout was due to the timing of the rollout, like you administered right before Thanksgiving break. Is there a reason why we chose that time, knowing that, you know, students and families would be traveling? Or is it possible, have you tried other times and got similar results? Or do we always do it at the same time of year? Or is there better?
Great question. So it was, this year was the first full week of November. It wasn't Thanksgiving week, but close to that time. Last year, it was the last full week of October. The year before that, we did it twice, and it was October and April of that year. In general, survey best practice for schools would suggest that the best time to measure, when you're not going to get like excitement that we're back, or excitement that we're about to be done, is like January, February, is a particularly good time to survey on these types of things.
But we don't do it in January, February.
But we are planning to pivot some of that structure as we move forward with Skip 2.0, because the surveys will be an important part of our needs. And so it would occur at that time of year in the future.
And I also wonder if there's some room for, I'm not exactly, in all honesty, I'm not exactly sure, like, how they roll it out, when it's scheduled during the day? And I can dig into that to figure out, like, if there's a better way to schedule it.
The, when the high schools run an assembly schedule and have everybody do the survey at the exact same time school-wide, they tend to have better responses. That's also complex for the schools to manage, and we don't have a central mandate on how they do the survey administration. So I know, for example, this year, I don't believe any of the three did.
Right, like I think?
And in other schools, it's like, well, we'll just have all English do it, whereas in other schools, it might be all second hour.
Right, but if you're in, I think some of that stuff can impact it, because if it's all second hour, but if you have an open hour, a second hour, or if you're in PSEO, that's going to impact your numbers. So I just wonder if there's some ways, if we really wanted to increase the response rate, especially at the high school? I think there's some ways we could.
Oh, for sure.
We could work with the high schools and do that.
And my last little piece, and then I'll let somebody else speak, is do we have any way of gauging, is there a parent portion? Now, you said the teacher portion was down, but do we also survey the parents' feelings towards, you know, how teaching is going? Because, you know, kids can be excited, but it may not necessarily be meeting parents' expectations of what they think should be happening in fourth grade. Do we also have new surveys?
We do have, right now, it lives outside of Panorama. We have a family engagement survey that's run out of our Office of Equity and Engagement, and I believe that's either, did you guys start it already, or it's really soon, I think? March? So in another month.
So it'll be separated? It wouldn't be incorporated into this data? It'd be nice to have it all.
Yeah, and I think there are some thoughts about how to do that in the future with Skip 2.0 as well.
Superintendent.
Very briefly, these response rates are solid. So just to be really clear, there are major studies that get done with 30% response rates. We have a few schools, so these are, we shouldn't, we can always do better. We do not have a family engagement survey that fully meets our needs. It has been invaluable to get the family engagement work started, but we need some better measures. In particular, it focuses a lot on how much do families, and I look forward to sharing with you, because I know Director Whitman, this is a particular concern and passion of yours, it's a lot about how much do families get to influence what happens in schools, which is part of it. It's less how do families feel the school is meeting their needs? It's less how do families feel the school is meeting their needs with their kid? And so that's, it's kind of, it's very focused on families as contributors to what schools are working on to improve. Less, I really feel my kid's teacher is super responsive to my needs, my kid's principal. That's the piece that I think we want to build out. We don't want to lose the other, but it needs to kind of have a little more, for lack of a better way to put it, the customer service side of working with families. And so that's one thing. There's not a, the, I do not like the panorama family engagement survey. I, I've looked at it extensively. I think Peter at least agrees. I, I don't know, I haven't talked with Will or Jennifer Smith or Craig about it. But we, and it, it costs extra money. It's like an upsell for panorama. And it wouldn't get us what we need. So we have a, we have a measurement opportunity with our family engagement work that we need to fill out in the next year. But we are going to give the survey and we, we will be sharing it when we do our update on family engagement. Like I was saying at the outset, we'll be marrying that data with what we're doing to strengthen it in a coming presentation.
Director Barlow?
I just wanted to be sure I understood. We're not so much concerned about the response rates. We're good. Survey results though. And that's where we will potentially, as you've suggested and the superintendent has affirmed, will be used to frame, to some degree, Skip 2.0. Just wanted to be sure I understood that.
Dr. McLaughlin?
If I'm understanding the discussion, that the schedule this year is to just do this once?
Correct, yes.
Are there opportunities with, following up on what Dr. McCall talked about? If there's something that the school wants to dig in deeper, you know, if it is an issue with girls and school safety or something like that? Can schools choose to do that if they want or?
And we have had some who do. Largely though, it's not within the panorama platform. They do it using their own method. But yes, we have had schools do that.
Okay. So not the same questions then to like repeat the data?
We license the platform for the year, so they do use very similar questions, although almost every school tweaks them a little bit because they want them to be. But when we pay the panorama license, it's for the entire year regardless of how many times we do it.
Okay. So schools have the opportunity to do that to follow up if they choose to? Awesome. And, okay, good. And then I just want to make sure that I'm understanding how the survey works, that something like school safety is, when you report the data there, that's not just one question about school safety? It's like a grouping?
Yes, thank you. No, great clarification. So each one of those scales with the line is an average of eight to sixteen questions?
Well, how many questions are on it?
On, on the student survey, it's less than thirty and on the staff survey, it's less than twenty.
So do some questions then evaluate more than one of these things?
No, each question only goes to one scale.
Is it evident to the students that this is what they're answering about necessarily?
I'm not sure I understand.
Are they, do they know they're answering a question about school safety on all the questions? Even like the third graders, they know from the context?
The topic of the survey is right there, yeah.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
So I asked you a question ahead of time about the data for grades six through twelve all being together. And if we were to look at it separately, would we see anything differently? And I know you mentioned that one of the uses is looking at individual schools, but can you say a little bit about how the data changes from sixth to twelfth grade?
So the data are a bit of a parabola. It's like a U shape. So it tends to start, if you analyze it by, if you only break it out into high school and middle school, there's not actually a whole lot of difference. It's when you do grade by grade by grade that you start to see it. So starts a little bit higher in sixth grade, drops, 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 tends to bottom out around ninth or tenth grade and then starts to increase again. And that's consistent, that's a consistent pattern across just about every one of these student majors.
Is that a consistent pattern in schools generally or is it a reflection?
From the evidence I've been able to find so far, yes.
It's, it's a, it's a function of early adolescence.
Yeah.
And if anybody wants a great book on this, I'm reading called Ten to Twenty-Five by David Jaeger, who's a great psychologist. And early adolescence is a time of heightened detachment from what the adults and the system think I ought to be doing and thinking and saying. And so even whether you're answering a question or sitting calmly in a middle school, there's a different neurobiological and social response to what you're supposed to be doing. That as, as hard as it may seem, if you're teaching eleventh and twelfth graders, there's a lot more compliance and sort of positive affect up there than there is in those middle grades. It's, you know, it's like that. It's a critical time though in kids' development to be engaging them around, you know, this sense of who am I? You have high expectations for me, but you really support me and believe in me. That matters for all kids at all ages, but boy, in that early adolescent period, it's just critical. Because we see kids get on a different trajectory. Kids who get off track, often it's happening at that point.
Any other questions, board members? Thank you for diving into the data for us.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is a prep for action item. School board compensation for fiscal year twenty-six. So it is our practice to have a conversation about our compensation in January each year. And when we talked about it at the January seventh meeting, there was consensus that we wanted to separate this discussion of our budget and have a discussion tonight. The board is only required to discuss the member compensation annually. There's no requirement for us to take any action unless the board chooses to do so. So just to remind everybody, Minnesota statute states that members of the board shall also receive such compensation as may be fixed by the board. The school board in May of 2021 set our compensation at sixteen thousand dollars per board member with a sixteen hundred dollar additional stipend for board chair. And the total budget for school board salaries is a hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred dollars. There was some information that was provided in the agenda item regarding various calculations related to increasing our compensation should we decide to choose, should we decide to choose to do so? And that's information only. And I will open it up to the board if anybody has any conversation they'd like to have. Director Workman?
I did a little bit of, of digging into what our other government groups do, namely the city council and the county commission for their compensation. So the county commission has raised their salary ten percent of each of the last two years. The goal has been to get it to seventy-five thousand dollars per year. In 2025, that amount is at sixty-four thousand dollars a year. They also have four hundred dollars a month for expenses, which is an additional forty-eight hundred dollars per year. That includes mileage, workshops and events. The city council in the fourth quarter of 2019, their compensation was twenty-seven thousand dollars per year as opposed to ours at that point, which was seventy-two hundred. In 2022 and twen- 2020 and 2021, they set their compensation to be eighty percent of the AMI, which is the area median income. If you're interested in that, you can look it up. It's something that we don't use because it has to do with, a lot to do with housing and low-income housing and that kind of thing. So that meant for those two years, it was at forty-six thousand dollars. And 2022, they raised it to ninety percent of AMI. So currently there, I think are at, I didn't write this down. I have it on a note here. I'll get it for you in a minute. They also get IT support, driving and phone, which amounts to less than three thousand dollars a year. The city council gets more than that. So the city council at this point is at fifty-six thousand dollars plus the additional compensation that I mentioned. Which brings that up to about fifty-nine thousand.
Director Whitman?
So when, when I was reviewing this and I'm looking at the numbers, I'm not a numbers girl, which you guys will soon see. Numbers is not my thing. People are my thing. So what I would say is when we are thinking of compensating for the board and we're thinking of future years, I would ask that we all keep in mind that we want to keep true democracy in mind as well when we're thinking of this. We want to make sure that when people are deciding if they want to be a part of the board, because there is some time commitments and we do have families and individuals that work additional jobs and do other things. What we have found on the boots-on-the-ground side is that compensation is sometimes a reason why people cannot be as involved in certain things as they would like to be. And I say this cautiously. Because we don't want to continue to have all our boards just made up of people who, because they have the income and the additional time, can show up, if I'm making a little sense here. So I just hope that we keep in mind that we want to make sure that as we grow as a community and as we grow as a board and, you know, as much as all of us want to just be here forever, we know that eventually we, we will need new blood here. We want to make sure that inability to compensate is not a reason that people are not able to be here. And if somebody else wants to clarify that in better terms than I did, but I do know that compensation is something that keeps some communities away from participating in some events because they literally cannot afford to lose a second income or be present at some of these things. So I do want to say that compensation is a serious conversation. And we do need to consider those things when we consider the growth of our boards and the growth of us wanting to diversify and hear new voices. That as much as it pains me, money, money is a real thing. People sell bills to pay. A carton of eggs is twenty bucks for sixty eggs. So, and it may not impact everyone at this table or at some tables as much, but it does impact some of our community members. And we do want to make sure that everybody feels that they can participate wholeheartedly in our democracy without feeling that they will be losing income in order to participate.
Director Workman?
Yeah, the other thing I'd like to add is all three of these jobs, city council, county commission, and school board are part-time jobs. So sixty-nine thousand dollars a year for a part-time job is pretty darn good, I think. I have no idea the scope of what the, the county commission does. Do they do more work, less work than we do? The same thing for the city. These three organizations are all very different in terms of the scope of our work and what it provides to the community. So I think we, we need to bear that in mind as well. Your point is well taken. It was one that was considered back in 2019 as to that being a barrier for people to run for the board. Nobody here is getting rich on a school board salary. But at the same time, it can be very helpful for people who actually really could use that income. There's no means test to be on the, on the school board, which is a good thing. But, you know, whether in fact will bear fruit and attract more people who maybe do have some of those concerns, you know, remains to be seen. But I think, I think your point is well taken.
Director McLaughlin?
I also agree that your point is well taken and I think it's something that we considered when we increased the salary is that from the low level that it was at until what it is currently, I'm hopeful will increase the pool of people who are able to access these roles. To Dr. Workman's point, or Director Workman's point, I, I think I would push back a little bit on the part-time part. I think the people that hold those positions would disagree with you that it's part-time? It's somewhere between part-time and full-time?
I think that the two people that I had contact with seem to think that it was unofficially a part-time job. Whether how much, I mean, the hours per month that school board members indicated they worked back in our survey in 2019 ranged anywhere between forty and ninety hours a month on school board work, which included not obviously, you know, meetings, committee work, events in the community, their own preparation for school board members. And, you know, so when people ask me, how many hours do you spend on a week? And I, it kind of depends on what the topic is and ongoing preparation for that. So it's, it's really, you know, it's been a little tricky for me to, to nail down because I haven't kept a real detailed time sheet.
And I appreciate that. I guess my point is that what I'm hearing in the community is that there's a difference of opinion on those boards about how big their roles are. The other thing that I want to add to the discussion, now that I've been on the board a little while, is just to share the information in a big picture about my personal circumstances. I do have a full-time job in addition to this role. And where I find myself at times is, for instance, the, the conference we went to last week, I used a day of personal time from my employer to attend that. So that's where the school board salary then helps compensate me for those, the time I'm missing from my regular job. And we have some different ways that we do that internally with my workplace. But just to recognize that it is something that people can do with another job, but I'll be honest, it's hard. It's really hard. And it's, and I have to pick and choose the daytime events that I go to sometimes. I try to get to some of the things that I can, but I recognize that I'm either working then into the evening or taking my personal time off to accomplish that. And I make those decisions for myself, but I want to be transparent with the community that it can be done, but it is challenging and that's how I manage it.
And I think that's, I think that's a really good point to make. If you look at our faces, there are some faces that are older than others. Those of us who are retired do have more time to devote to it than we would have if, when we were working our full-time jobs as well. And so when we say, well, we need younger people on the board, you know, how do we do that if you have a board member with children? A board member with lots of children and, I mean, full-time job, lots of responsibilities apart from this? You know, the juggling is really, can be really, really difficult.
Director Mervin?
Yeah, this really hearkens back to the conversation we had when we voted a raise for school board. We want to be sure that people who have, who are going to need to get daycare, babysitters for their kids to get to a meeting, that, that they have the ability to come to events during, during the day, which is going to have some cost for them as well. So that's why we voted to give the, the raise. And I think that was important because I think we don't want to preclude people from wanting to serve on the school board because they can't afford to. It just, it's going to cost them more and this salary wouldn't cover it. That said, and I remember that conversation too, you know, being fiscally responsible for our budget. And so I'm really torn. I, I think that, you know, a small raise per year or every two years to keep up with inflation is probably acceptable. We know that all of our employee groups get some raise each year, but I, I think anything substantial is, especially now, is a mistake.
Director Barlow?
Well, two things. When I originally ran for school board and was elected, I was surprised to find out that there was compensation. That being said, I was pleased to find out that there was and have learned to realize, or grown to realize through time effort experience that the current compensation does not truly, if you will, rise to that level of paying for the total amount of time, effort, energy expended. And I find it odd, you know, certainly, and I've not attended a county commissioner meeting when they discussed, when their wages were, well, pay increases were presented or council when they discussed it. And if they had to go to the extent that we seemingly do to justify or try to make the public feel that, you know, or try to make the public feel that, you know, we're deserving, worthy. And so I always feel awkward, maybe that's somewhat reflective of the generation I represent. My daughter's generation, they have no problem saying what they'll take the job for. And I'm thinking, wow, you know? But I think it is important that the three options that are available, I'm not going to go into, they're available to be viewed. We're not talking, for one, would be a total budgetary impact of $12,000, just over 12 a year, another would be 24, and another just over $25,000. And it's not our job. I heard, I believe someone had mentioned, well, if we approve it, then we have to, well, where are we going to get the money to pay for it? That's not our job to figure out where we're going to get the money to pay for it in terms of our own salaries. If we were to approve this and the director of finance would, much like with contracts and everything else, would work the magic. And all I'm suggesting is, and there's not a vote yet, this is just a discussion, and I don't know how you plan on proceeding with this. If you stated that annually we agreed to discuss this and this is part of what we're doing annually, so I don't know really how much more needs to be said if this isn't going to be tied to an action or a result or if we're simply discussing it and then having done due diligence to our ABCD, we move to the next item. So I don't really know what the planned expectation is beyond this aspect of discussion, if I could maybe know that.
So this being a prep-for-action item, we're discussing whether or not we want to take action. So if a board member did want to propose a specific compensation level, it could be to maintain compensation at whatever it is currently, or it could be some sort of increase. One of the things that I've been thinking about, and I agree the word awkward is the word that I always think of when we're doing this, in terms, because it's always, it's always perceived as raising your own salary. But I think about what Director Whitehorn said and what the conversation has been in the past, is that we want to make sure that people considering running for a board position are doing it because the compensation is attractive to them to meet their needs. So I wonder if the board would be willing to consider a forward-thinking action where we would rate, we could consider raising the compensation but put it into effect for board members who would take office after the upcoming election that happens in 2026. So it wouldn't take effect until those new board members would be elected. So people who would be running for the board in 2026 would know their compensation level would be whatever we set it as. And those of us on the board would only be affected, would be the three that would remain in office after 2027 and anyone else who is re-elected to the board. We think it's an important statement to make, that school board members should be compensated at a certain level, but we're not comfortable raising our own compensation at this time. And luckily for us, it's not a decision we would have to make tonight because we could have that discussion and we could keep our own compensation the same right now. And then we could have that conversation in January of 2026 and that would still be a decision we can make in time for the election cycle that happens and, starting in May of 2026. That was one way I was thinking about it.
Dr. Cook.
I'm glad that this is a prep-for-action item and that we took the time afforded by us at the last meeting to spend some more time thinking about this because I am really glad that I've had the opportunity to hear from my colleagues and I'm glad that we're not deciding anything tonight because I'm going to continue to reflect on a lot of this. But the point that I wanted to raise for my fellow directors before we move on is where we were in our study session last week and the importance of being able to hold very firm in our contract renewals and our lease services. And very respectfully, Director Barlow, I think it is absolutely our obligation to decide where this money would come from. And it isn't so much the incremental $10,000 to $20,000 a year, but it's the argument, and a very valid argument or concern, that we would be granting to those looking for a material increase in their next contract renewal and how we would be able to, how we feel like this decision would impact our ability to meet our fiscal obligations for contract renewals that will be coming up in the next year. I think Chair Nathan, your suggestion about really tying any potential increase to the term of a newly seated board after an election to address precisely the concerns that Director Whitehorn raised and elaborated on really quite eloquently is one that I'll continue to consider very carefully. But I hadn't thought of that and, yeah, anyway, I'll continue to think.
Director McLaughlin.
I appreciate that idea as well and definitely will put some thought into that. The only other thing I wanted to add to the discussion is I was on the board at the time that we made the most recent increase. My view at that time, I remember thinking that the compensation prior to that increase was artificially low and it had been the same for so long that it made a lot of sense to modernize and upgrade the salary for this role in our community. I think it's a harder decision now.
Yes? Director Whitehorn.
So I just want to say, I do, I do agree with a lot of the statements here tonight. I do think, I do agree that it is some of our responsibility to keep our budget in mind, even though it, like to Director Barlow's point, that there are some things that we can and cannot do, right? Some of it is our job and some of it isn't, but we still want to be mindful when we are making these changes. And I think we just, I think everyone is kind of saying the same thing. There's a mindfulness on both sides. We want to make sure that we, from a small business owner's perspective, I will say, you get what you pay for, right? If you, you know, what you're, what you're offering is, will determine what you're attracting for candidates, right? That's just from a simple business model. If I'm paying below my competitors, then I am going to attract either people who are already financially stable or, you know, people that may be very desperate, you know, which is why as a small business owner, we also have to try to be competitive. So there is a realness to compensation and the value of people's time. Unfortunately, that is the time we are living in now, that people attach their compensation to their value. So those are things to be mindful of and we also need to be mindful, as Director Cook said, of our financial obligations, that we are not putting our school board in a position that we now have to figure out how to compensate things that our children will need educationally. So I agree that, I'm glad we're not voting on this tonight, but I do think there's some mindfulness on both sides and hopefully we can find a happy medium that will allow for growth and not allow for putting damage towards our school district.
Director Workman.
So I noticed in your exec update, Chair Nathan, that you mentioned that nobody had signed up for the COSBA conference yet. So that's in our budget, you know? How much of a part of our budget, you know, what is that dollar amount? Mr. Carlson, you don't have to give it to me right now. You know, in previous years, we have budgeted for all seven school board members to go to the National School Board Association Conference. Many years we all went, sometimes we didn't. That doesn't seem to be a part of our budget now. So if there's any place where we are not spending the money that we had budgeted at one point, I don't know if that would be helpful in looking at the total, just for those kinds of compensation, not talking about, you know, increases and, well, I won't say benefits because we don't have benefits, but all the other things that go into our compensation which aren't directly related to salary.
Well, the last meeting, we made a decision for the fiscal year 26 budget to keep everything at the same level it was this year. And the COSBA conference cost is $6,000 that we budgeted for two board members to attend. So that's the amount that's in the budget. Director Barlow.
In that there appears to be no real appetite or desire to vote or to consider any extensions for school board compensation, I'd like to make a motion that our school board salaries remain currently as is.
Good second.
We're not taking action tonight. We're going to come with a consensus of what you would like the resolution to look like. So I'm hearing our current amount is $16,000 with, would you like to continue the board additional stipend, which is set at 10% of the salary?
Board chair.
The board chair, sorry.
I personally object to that, but I didn't get a second the first time I raised that. So I think it should be higher, but I was on my own on that.
But you want to keep it at 10%, which is what, $1,600 now? But we're going to keep it the same and it would be both. Well, that could be the resolution that we bring for action next meeting. We're not taking action on it right now. Is there any consensus from the board that you would like to place the discussion of compensation? We'll have it no later than next January, but is there any further information or analysis that you would like before we make our decision? I think the question for Mr. Cook might be a good one to have answered, at least by the time we have this conversation next time, which is, if we increase our salary, where does the money come from? If we don't carve it out of our own budget, which would mean taking, for example, it may be a COSBA attendance, a lot of the other items that we talked about last week really can't be carved out except the MSBA Leadership Conference and I don't really think there's a lot of consensus for us not to attend that. So it could be a question for Mr. Carlson to say, if the board ever decided to increase its compensation, where would that money come from?
And that was really the only point I was making when I made reference. It's not our job to make the decisions that Mr. Carlson would offer. And very well stated.
Director McLaughlin.
I would entertain wanting to know a little bit more information about how other boards do this in the sense that, I appreciate Director Workman's work on the different options we have, but they're all very different. And if there's consensus of how another, how other boards of our size do this, I would be interested to know that.
Set their compensation.
Right. Or increases in compensation, I guess, would be the more.
Is that something you want to know before we take action next week or is that for a future?
I would say for future.
Okay. Is that consensus of the board as well?
Director Workman.
So Director Barlow made a recommendation, I'd like to make one as well. In 2019, we had originally looked at adjusting it to inflation and the compensation would have been $17,000 at that point in 2019. And I guess we settled on $16,000 because it wasn't a prime number or something. So I, my suggestion would be that we raise our compensation to $17,000. And if Mr. Carlson feels that, I can't put the responsibility on you, you know, where else in our budget we might be able to cut back the COSBA one would be obviously, if people decide not to go, that would cover six-sevenths of that increase.
So you would like the resolution to read that we would set our compensation at $17,000 beginning in fiscal year 26? Okay, well, now we have two resolutions. But would your recommendation be though, I mean, I think if we're going to make a recommendation to increase our compensation, we should probably have a recommendation for decreasing our budget somewhere else because I agree with Director Cook. I think we all know what the budgets look like, even for next year. And it may seem like, I mean, we're talking about $8,000, no, $7,100 of an increase to the budget.
And if we don't do the COSBA, that would leave $1,000.
Right. But that's what I'm saying is that we would, would the board consider a resolution where we would increase our compensation to $17,000 and then also direct to change the decision we made last week to include attendance at the COSBA conference in our budget for next year? Take that out of our budget, which would leave us, as you said, $1,100 to find, to pay for the increase.
Director McLaughlin.
To clarify that question, finding it within our school board budget or finding it with the district budget, within the school board?
Within our school board, if we can.
I think we should make that clear, that that's what we're, we're not asking to increase our school board budget, we're just shifting funds from one.
Then we'd have to find it all from within our school board budget.
And if we can't find that, $7,100, was that what you said the amount was?
On my back-of-the-envelope calculation, yes.
Yes, you know, then we could, if we just eliminate the COSBA conference, which hasn't seemed to get much traction since it was started a couple of years ago, you know, we could drop it to $6,000 total, which would be 6,000 divided, I'm not going to do the math in my head.
So if I hear some direction from the board, I could suggest that I could work on two resolutions. One would be to keep our compensation the same and one would be to increase it to $17,000, but in the meantime, bring you a plan for how that would be paid within our current budget and not take any funds elsewhere for fiscal year 26.
Well, Madam Chair, if I may, it might, if that is indeed the direction we go in, it might be useful for not only the board as a whole, but the community to know, since we're using this term "school board budget," to actually see what it is so that we as a board know what it is, the community as well would know. We're not talking copious amounts of money.
It was, I think it was in the January 7th meeting.
Yeah, I think.
It was broken down.
The total amount was in last week's agenda, but I could, we have the option, if you would like to see it in the context of the whole budget, we could bring that information back next week.
Not so much in terms of the whole budget. Well, when you say whole budget.
The whole school board budget, sorry.
Yes.
Yes. So that you could see what our whole budget is.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, but as I understand it, the only piece we would want to revisit from the decision we made at the last meeting would be any decrease in the budget to make up for the increase in our compensation. Are you hearing that?
Yes.
We all get to vote on this too, so this is not a direction of.
I'll just add one more thing because I, and as I said, I'm going to continue to think about this and so forth, but I'm pretty sure I would have a very difficult time supporting anything that would give the, increase the school board compensation by more than the 3% target that we have set for our budget model for wage growth over the next year. So that would be an increase to 16,480. I'm still not sure I can get there, but I'm almost certain I can't go beyond that. So in case that informs anyone else's views here.
So 3% increase based on what we've used, what has been used elsewhere in the district budget for increase in salary? Okay. And you said 16?
That would be 16,480.
Okay.
So I'd like to ask a clarifying. So I'd like to ask a clarifying question. When we voted on everything else last time, under travel and conferences, we had $11,000 for MSBA conference attendance by all board members, and $6,000 for COSBA. So it looks to me that we did budget that amount?
Say that again.
11,000 for MSBA. I'm reading from the information that was presented on January 7th.
Yep. And how much for COSBA?
11,000 for MSBA and 6,000 for COSBA.
Right. So there are $6,000 in our budget for fiscal year 26 to attend the COSBA conference.
And also for MSBA.
Well, yeah.
Oh, that's this, okay.
Right. But I thought.
Sorry, I was thinking, I was thinking national, I was thinking national, okay.
Yeah, no, that's the state conference we just did, yep. But there is $6,000 in the budget, should the board decide not to budget for attendance at the COSBA National Conference, that could be available to us to cover some of the increase in our compensation. And then we would just have to look for an additional $1,100 somewhere else in our budget. Director White.
I just have a clarifying question, so, just so I'm clear. So it sounds like, before I was involved in it here, there was an increase suggested, what was it, 17,736? I'm not sure, because she, Director Workman really hasn't explained why, we chose to go down to 16,000 evenly?
It was, yeah, we chose, I'm not sure why we chose 16,000 over 17,000. I mean, 17,000 would have been the straight inflationary since 1987. And we decided on 16,000, like I said, 16,000 is a nice rounder number compared to 17,000, which is not.
My recollection back to that is that we wanted to undercut it slightly.
Okay.
Like not go to the complete max of the inflationary increase, but to soften that a little bit.
So, again, not being a numbers person, we chose to take the decrease, but the number was based off of the 17,000, right? So that's like our, our number, for lack of words, so that's the, but we decided as a board, hey, we're gonna take 16. Can we not say we will, we know the number, but we can vote down? So I say that to Director Cook's point, right, that this could be the number that it should be if we keep up with inflation, and then we decide as a board, this is where we would accept to be. Because that's what it sounded like happened before. It's not that we did not recognize that the salary, in order to keep up, should have been here. So if we have that number playing in the background, so we know where we are supposed to be with the 3% wage increase, but the board is saying, well, this should be our number, whatever that number is with 3% wage, that's where it should be if we did it the technical way, but we say, okay, we're voting down. Do I make a suggestion, y'all? Or no?
The resolution was 16,000. I mean, that was the resolution, so we got the background information.
Right.
This would be the inflationary amount, however, the resolution was for 16,000. So there wasn't a real discussion at the board table.
And there's no, there's no should be, right? We could decide to set it according to social security increases. We could decide to set it by a measure of the rate of inflation, and there's different rates of inflation. There's setting it similar to what other employee groups have gotten. I think the issue that these calculations were reflecting is that we haven't increased our compensation for a few years. So we've missed a few years of
Adjustment.
Adjustment for what, however you would want to adjust it, and that's where these calculations come by.
I think we have to be really careful about saying we're going to use inflation as the calculator. I remember back many decades ago, when it was suggested that teachers should simply receive an increase tied to inflation, and the response at that time was, we can't afford it. So I would really be very reticent to say, we're gonna tie it to the rate of inflation when we don't do that, generally for our other employees. So the first, I mean, I think the first example, given with, you know, the increases that staff have gotten, or traditionally gotten, is, would be for me a lot more realistic than.
Which is the 3%.
Well, just, or just, or just, I mean, one-year inflation was what, almost 9%?
Well, I also think that there's, there's two schools of thought as to how we're calculating the increase. The options, not the options, the calculations that were provided in the agenda item are designed to take our current compensation to a compensation that reflects increases for the past few years that we missed, if you will, because we didn't, the board chose not to increase its compensation those years. Whereas what, and that amount would be, depending on the rate of increase we use, an increase to 17,736, an increase to 1942, or an increase to 19538. And then Director Workman said, if we go back to where it would have been in 2019, that would have been that $17,000 number. And then what Director Cook is saying is, let's look at where we are now, and not consider making up, for example, for the past few years. But just look at what we have budgeted, and what we have put in our budget for other employee group increases, and not exceed that, and that's the 16,480 amount.
And I think one of the, one of the conversations that we had back in 2019, Director Amundsen, Amundsen, who was on the board then, and I were the ones who did a lot of the research, I'll credit Melissa with a big chunk of that, was that instead of waiting another 30-some years to make an adjustment and have this huge thing, that it would be more prudent for us to make smaller adjustments every year or two. So I don't have it in me right now to go back and figure out how much the district has saved by not going with any inflationary increases for any of those years. But I'm sure, I mean, I'm sure that the dollar amount would be more than $1,100.
Personally, since, since the ability for the board to increase its compensation was in the board's hands every year, and boards that we were on or not on chose not to increase it.
Correct.
I'm comfortable not trying to make up
Right.
For actions that previous boards or combinations of boards didn't take.
I agree.
And simply consider what we might want to do to increase it going forward, if at all. So as I look at the numbers, then, we have one suggestion, which is to keep our current compensation at 16,000 and not increase it for fiscal year 26, but perhaps have a conversation next January of increasing it for the next incoming board. Or if we were to consider an increase for fiscal year 26, increasing it by 3%, which would match what is being budgeted elsewhere in the budget for employee group increases, and that would be that 16,480 amount.
Director Barlow.
Yes, thank you for the clarification, and just want to be sure that with the resolutions, there, I thought you had communicated that it seemed like there was a desire on the part of the board to have the effective date for compensation increase, if it were approved, to be reflected in the next election cycle, if I understood that correctly, okay? Which would suggest, then, we may be premature and focusing on the current budget, oh, we have X amount of dollars in the current budget for the COSBA conference, which has no direct bearing on the discussion we're having for future compensation.
And I think I haven't quite heard the consensus from the whole board, that nobody wants to consider increasing their compensation for fiscal year 26. If I hear that, then we'll write the resolution that way, that we want to keep our compensation at 16,000 for fiscal year 26.
Just a question of clarification. So I thought I heard that we were out of consideration for future board candidates, really looking to tie this toward the next election cycle.
That was a suggestion I made.
Okay.
But then we had some additional conversation about whether we still wanted to consider your suggestion for the resolution, which was to keep it at 16,000, or whether, as Director Workman mentioned, to take it back to the amount that it could have been in 2019 if we had raised it to inflation then. Since we had that conversation, I think we've also come around to say, as I hear from the board, and you can tell me if I'm hearing it wrong, that we don't necessarily want to make up for the past few years of not increasing. So that was the three options that were in the agenda item. So now what only remains is keeping it at 16,000, or considering it to be no more than a 3% increase at 16,480. So that's the direction looking for the board, is what would you like to see in that resolution next week?
My preference would be to keep it where it is, and revisit in January for possible adjustment before a new board is seated. That's where I'm at.
Okay.
Which is kind of why we were having this discussion
Right.
Now, because we weren't in our elections.
So if I don't hear any objections, that is the resolution that I will bring back to the board for action at the next meeting. And then we will continue to collect information so that our conversation next January, which would involve both, it would be a conversation about our compensation, but it could also include a conversation about compensation for the next board. Well, on same page?
Yes.
Good. Thank you, board members, for getting through that awkward conversation. Our next item is 8.1, Priorities for the 2025 Legislative Session. This is an action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 hereby adopts the following legislative priorities for 2025: Continue to address education funding, focus on student-centered policies, and improve school board governance.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Legislative Committee members, do you want to run us through anything?
The only thought that I had on this is that Director Workman and I have taken the lead on this with the transition of the committee structure, and it seems like a lot of priorities. So, and I think I sent that in an email to the board as well, that if there's any thought on removing any of these, or potentially differing them to a following year, or somehow else modifying this lengthy list, I think the Legislative Committee would be interested in that.
Director Mervin.
Would there be any, would it be useful at all if we, within each of these buckets, prioritized?
Yes.
Because I can't think of anything on here that's not important, but if we could say, if you can only do three of these things in each list.
And when I converted what we dealt with at the study session to this, I tried to do that, in this, from the discussion at the study session. So for example, I think B and C were together for the study session, and they were the first listed, but the discussion at the study session caused me to want to put the local option revenue as the first one.
Okay, so you have them, the A, B, C, sort of, that's the priority.
Based on the discussion at the study session.
Okay.
In, in my own personal assessment of that discussion.
Superintendent.
You know, this is, obviously, the board's action, but I appreciated being involved in this. I think you could think of this as endorsing the full slate of options, thereby allowing us during the legislative session, which is always inherently fluid, especially the one we're currently in, and we get asked to testify about things, unexpectedly, issues come up. Mr. Carlson just got asked the other day to testify on a couple of issues that are here. I think this is an instance, I think the board knows I'm usually a fan of less is better, this is one in which you're endorsing this full suite, and it allows us, over the course of the session, to advocate for these priorities because you've endorsed them all. I've already asked Ms. Kramer to schedule a meeting with the Legislative Committee, so we can decide, following board approval, which of these to emphasize when and where. So I think it actually could be productive to endorse this full slate, and then charge the committee with working with me and the administration in deciding how we actually advance these priorities, especially tied to the opportunities that will present themselves over the course of the legislative session.
I guess what I'm hearing you say then is looking at it more as a menu of things we can pick and choose off of, based on events that we don't know are gonna happen yet.
Yeah, I would, periodically, I get asked to either testify or comment, and if it hasn't been, if, on state legislation, if it hasn't been approved by this board, I don't do it. Whereas I see now, you're saying, yep, these things are all aligned with our priority, and then I could work with the committee, but also have this on hand, so that we can move it forward. And we can always kind of massage the presentation, I think, as long as we're true to the content that's here. We might group them differently, we might prioritize them differently.
And I guess I was looking at it from the perspective of speaking with our local legislators, this is a lot for them to absorb, and it may cause them to wonder, what are our priorities? But I think that's a separate conversation.
Director Barlow.
Well, I was reflecting on your Chair Nathan recent communicate to the board as a result of the Executive Committee that you, Vice Chair Superintendent, had in reference to this very subject, and I support the suggested recommendation that you guys made, that we would, what the Superintendent basically just said, that they're good, as is, we can approve it, and it's a living document, if you will, and as such, when the opportunity presents itself to actually engage with the legislatures, or to testify, that'll be the opportunity for the Superintendent to speak to and address them in a timely fashion.
Director Workman.
I think, too, if there should be something that comes up that is not on this list that we feel really passionate about, this resolution can be amended to add that. So it's not like.
On the, I believe the resolution is broad enough.
Yes, we shouldn't have to do that.
Because we included categories that we could add. Somebody comes up with an innovative bill.
Yep.
I think we have the flexibility within the categories to tackle it. All right. Any other comments, questions, ready to vote? All right. All those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the resolution has been approved. Item 8.2, Approval Parameters for Development of the 2025-2026 District Budget. This is an action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the 2025-26 budget parameters as presented in Attachment A, and request that district administration prepares the budget in accordance with those parameters.
Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Director Cook.
I'm excited about the, the direction that this set of priorities sets forth, and just want to note that I'm particularly, I know that these numbered items here aren't necessarily in order of importance, but I am particularly excited about Item 6, where the board is directing, upon passage of this, of this item, the board would be directing the administration to develop a long-term strategy to address the projected deficits that we just reviewed at last week's study session. I think that's really important for our role in governing the district and understanding the impact of the realistic budget forecast that we have on our ability to meet the needs of students. So look forward to supporting this.
Director Workman.
In line with what Director Cook said, when we talk about deficits that are projected for year '27 and beyond, it's like, well, didn't we just pass a referendum? But that referendum also had a caveat as to declining enrollments, and that was the main factor.
And healthcare.
Right, and healthcare premiums, so we can't keep the budget the same if we have 1,000 fewer students, or 500, or, you know, whatever that.
Director Barlow.
I fully support the resolution, and just one question. We're well into the new year. We do know that we are We're well into the new year. We do know that we are experiencing declining birth rates. As you have informed us, that the class of twenty twenty-five will be the highest. And then from there, we will see declining numbers. And so when will the demographer, I'm, I'm unsure as to who we're going to work with. When will that information be available? It will have little bearing on the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, but it certainly will have great bearing in terms of future out year. So when will we have that information, do you think?
Our plan, and a strong assumption, is to have it for you when you begin deliberation of the budget in May and the long-term strategy. So that we'll be conducting it, and we'll be able to present the long-term strategy and also next year's budget. There may be some things we learn about next year's budget, but I think you're probably right. Mostly, that's going to be close to our current projection. We'll be able to share that at the time we bring you both the budget for next year and the long-term strategy.
Thank you.
Director McLaughlin.
I also plan to vote in favor of this, and I like the fact that these priorities have captured a lot of what the district has been working on as of late with the balanced budget model, the referendum, and the presentation about the projected deficits. The only question I have is when I was looking at this just now, right above item number one, it looks like we maybe dropped a word at the end of that last line. And I don't know if it's a word or more than one word.
Budget.
The school districts, what?
I'm assuming budget, but.
Yes, sorry. Budget. I must have been so excited.
Makes it more exciting.
You wanted to get to the test.
Right.
Yes.
Plan your own adventure.
I, I too.
You want adventure added to that?
Support these budget parameters. And while having to develop a strategy for future deficits is something that's, I, I always makes people uncomfortable. I just want to remind people that we did this three years ago, and we had a strategy, and we kept to that strategy each of those three years. And it has put us in the healthy financial situation we are today. So I am pleased that we are using a time-tested process and are continuing to do that so that we can have some consistency for our community as well as to how they see us making budget decisions and the information that comes from our, from our superintendent. So I look forward to doing it again.
Mike, just super briefly, that the, the direction that I'm recommending you give us is to develop that strategy. The degree to which you feel prepared to vote on that strategy in June is something that we can talk about at that time. To Chair Nathan's point, you did vote three years ago on the whole long-term strategy. Generally speaking, that's the approach I would recommend you take. You could also say, we're voting on the budget for next year, and we're going to work on the long-term strategy into the fall. But this is charging us with giving you that strategy concurrent with the submission of the budget. So frankly, that we're really sure we don't kick the can down the road. And that while we're asking you to vote on next year, which our projections say will be a year where we will not have a deficit, that we are forcing ourselves to think ahead a year and present you with that long-term strategy.
Hearing no other comments, all those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the resolution has been approved. Item nine point one is our board questions and responses. There were questions submitted by board members before the meeting, and they are available in this agenda item. The current version of the A, B, C, D is available in this agenda item for reference. Are there any agenda items board members would like to raise for consideration for a future meeting agenda? Hearing none, we have a board meeting scheduled for February eighteenth at five thirty P M. With, beginning with a special session on field trips with a regular meeting immediately following. A board meeting on March fourth at five thirty P M, a regular meeting on March eighteenth at five thirty P M, and a regular meeting on April eighth at five thirty P M. And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at seven forty-three P M.